Pelican Preserve Committee meeting minutes of August thirteenth is in the book. Nancy, would you care to come to the podium and answer any questions that the board might have?
Nancy Hall, Pelican Preserve, member of the Pelican Preserve Advisory Committee.
We've read the minutes that were in our book. Are there questions?
Yes.
Please.
Nancy, you don't have the -- it's on page nineteen for anybody that wants to reference it. Indicate it as agenda page nineteen. There's a statement at the end of section four which -- read it. It's very -- a certain individual expressed the committee's dissatisfaction with the way Severn Trent is handling the cash management. The question that I wrote down was, the note was, is this the entire committee's opinion and what specifically are the issues?
The opinion is of a single individual, although I have to say, everybody's a little disappointed that we're not getting a bigger return because we do have a lot of funds when you're talking about the accumulation of funds that we have for the ponds. We also have the reserves and we have some other funds to make decisions about. And the question was, is there something else that we can do to get a higher rate? And we understand that there are -- we don't, we're not looking at anything exotic. We've invited Steve Blum to come to our next meeting next week and talk to us about what we can do legally, what the options are. The idea was, is there something out there, maybe treasuries or CDs, that can be laddered out a little bit depending on how we're spending our money? Pelican has every year set aside, for instance, pond money. And there's only so much that can be spent every year. And some of those projects have gotten, have slid in the timeline a little bit just because something else took a priority or there was a delay in getting, you know, the request for bids out or whatever. And so we've accumulated some funds and now maybe the priorities have changed a little bit based on some of the findings of the Pond Committee of what needs to be done next. And so one of the -- that's a big pot of money. And what we've asked the Pond Working Group to do is to come up with a realistic timeframe of when they think they might need those funds to do those projects. And to see if we could do, example, a six-month CD and a one-year CD, kind of ladder them a little bit and what kind of rates we would be looking at if we did that. So we understand that there are constraints that we have to operate in. We just wonder if it's not money that we're not going to be using currently, six months, for instance, or a year. Oh, is there a way we can earn a better return on it? And it's not a dissatisfaction with Severn Trent as far as we're concerned. It's a practice that's happened historically that we just really haven't had an investment plan if we've had a significant amount of money.
I know, I drove by the AAA the other day on Colonial and they're, on their billboard sign right at the AAA, it said that they have 1.75 percent CDs available. So they were, but is that an attractive rate?
Well, gentlemen, if I may, I spoke to Phil Madsen, the chairman of the Pelican Preserve Advisory Committee several days ago after I read what you just referred to. And Phil confirmed what Nancy just said about committee's dissatisfaction, that the whole committee is not dissatisfied. And I want you to give particular attention to what Nancy just said about working with Stephen Blum. If we're going to invest funds, it's a, it's a two-party operation. The folks who know how the money is going to be spent time-wise have got to converse with the person who knows what securities are available. For instance, if what we read in the news is true and the Fed's going to increase rates later this year per yen, they've been saying that for four years, but that's aside the point. If you go out and buy some one-year treasuries, for instance, if you don't hold them to maturity, you're going to end up with less money than you invested. If you buy a year or two or three-year CDs, and by the way, they, those CDs, I believe, have to be purchased with, from a bank with whom we have a depository contract and not just any old bank that happens to have a sign out, then you have to realize that in an increasing rate environment, you don't want to go out too long or you're going to be losing some of the pop that's going to hopefully be coming when CD rates increase. Now, having said all that, there very possibly is a little bit of additional return that's available, but these interest rates are so doggone flat right now that it's hardly enough to make a fuss about.
Well, I mean, we're talking, we're talking over a million dollars. And we're talking the return for last year was something, I mean, truly miniscule on a million dollars. And I don't have that number in front of me.
That's right, but changes have been made in what you're being invested in since that time, correct?
I don't know that they have. They may have, but...
I thought the indication was that it was, that Stephen was looking into it, Bill, that hadn't...
No, he's using money markets also. The, it's qualified public depositories that you have to invest in. You can have, it could be with any qualified public depository, but you can't go to AAA and invest your money.
But you could go to like Sunco's Credit Union, which is...
If they're a QPD.
If you're a QPD, there's a statute that defines the qualifications and the state chief financial officer determines whether an entity qualifies as a QPD using the guidelines and the...
They are out trying to get customers like crazy.
But there's a, the reason they put that into place is that any investor on their funds is only protected up to the FDIC limits. With local units of government, you're protected 100 percent above the FDIC limits.
It's a collateral pool arrangement.
Right. And for these banks to be able to be public, publicly qualified PDQs, they have to invest and put money in reserve that's a pool for if a municipality was to lose money, they'd be reimbursed. So you're protected 100 percent. You can't lose your money. Now, money markets is one that has a quick turnover of funds, and I know Stephen has either invested or is in the process. I thought he'd already put that up.
I didn't know that it actually happened yet, but it's close.
Yeah. The other CDs is another. And even some commercial paper is permissible, but it's just, you know, the CDs are good.
I'm not a big fan of commercial paper.
Yeah, and if I may, and maybe in conjunction with Cal's saying, I think we've said before, the Florida statutory scheme is, there's three priorities. And the first priority is preservation of the capital. The second one is liquidity, and third is rate of return. That's how the Florida statute's laid out specifically in the statute. And the statute has a default, I'll call it, investment program where you can invest in, and that's the district is in the default by virtue of the adoption of a resolution. If the district wanted to get an analysis by Cal or Stephen as to whether or not we should change the investment policy to another investment policy other than, I'll call it, the default one, that's something the board can do. But just by way of example, as to the rates of return out there for local governments, it's not that good. The clerk of courts in Kira County has an investment manager who lives out in Arizona who's constantly looking at what best to invest in. And the latest analysis, the last month, from the one-year returns, September 2014 to August 2015, and he has hundreds of millions of dollars that he invests, surplus funds is what they invest. And the S and P rated GIP short-term index is less than 0.2 percent. The B of Bank of America one-to-three-year treasury note long-term index is about 0.2224. And the clerk is getting an incredibly great rate of return based upon his investment strategy of about 1.19. And so, I mean, it's...
1.19 sounds pretty...
You're right. Let's go for that one.
But he is, he is an investment manager. He pays, he's on staff, but maybe we can tap, you know, he's independent contractor. Maybe we tap his resources.
Well, all I'm saying is that we are talking with Stephen. Stephen's coming to the meeting. We're going to talk specifically about what we have and when we think we might need those funds and have him tell us what he thinks that, if there's a, if there is a better alternative. You know, it was a question that was raised.
Right. Well, if you're dissatisfied, if you talk to him, will you please get back to us on it?
Sure.
Thank you.
Now, I want to go to page twenty.
Page twenty, okay.
And it's you.
All right, then I should know what...
I'm sure you do. Nancy Hall stated many residents were out of town during March of July. They may be unaware of the incident, yada, yada, yada.
Where are you?
Page twenty.
Yeah, I know. I heard that.
Item seven.
This is talking about the lady over in...
Seven Lakes.
Yeah, Seven Lakes, that unfortunately died as a result of a golf cart being driven by, I think it was an eight-year-old. Her grand, great-grandfather was in the cart with her. The child hit the, hit the woman and she was in the hospital for two or three weeks and then subsequently passed away. And I brought that to the attention of the committee members at the time because, as you know, we've been talking about golf cart usage in Pelican and the rules and was there any, you know, benefit to trying to talk to the people, the community in Seven Lakes or, because it's basically similar to ours except in Pelican, except they're probably a little older population. It's a golf cart community, designated golf cart community. And do they have rules in place or not have rules in place that we have? The committee at that point had decided to turn that over to Ron DePont's Working Group. And they are working at enhancing the recognition in Pelican of the rules and making sure our golf carts are registered and being a lot more careful with what we have. I don't know if we're ever, until we have a way to punish, if you want to use the word, however we do it, someone who is not obeying the rules, whether it's somebody under sixteen driving the golf cart or they're driving in the bicycle lane and they're not supposed to be in the bicycle lane or they run through stop signs. Until we have a mechanism in place where we can identify those people and have a way that would impact them in some way. I know when we were working on the golf cart rules, enforcement of those rules was the biggest issue and we really still don't have a clear answer on it, but the Working Group is trying to come up with some answers. And Tony, I, the police department told the Working Group that, that even if they were in there, they wouldn't enforce golf cart rules.
They would just enforce the traffic laws, is that what they were saying?
Yeah, they'd just enforce the traffic laws. So...
Does that mean that if the golf cart ran the stop sign like they always do, that they would enforce that?
They said they, what they told the Working Group was that they would not enforce...
So a golf cart becomes, you can't touch me?
The same thing as the bicycles that go through them, blow through them.
They have to comply with the traffic laws if they're...
Well, they should be, all of them should be complying with the traffic laws, but...
At the master association meeting that we had recently, a resident asked the question. So I register my golf cart, but he alluded to the fact that he knew that there were other people that did not. What enforcement do we have if somebody just says, I'm not going to register my cart? So they don't have any proof of insurance, et cetera, et cetera. And the answer by our property manager was at that time...
I know. That was very disappointing.
The district has the ability, important, to litigate, to force compliance with its rules. That's its remedy. They don't have the ability to find under the statutory scheme.
The other, the only other...
But there's a big cost with litigating.
To sue them, to make them apply the rules.
Yeah, but, I mean, why doesn't the roving patrol do anything? An example was, the other day I'm driving out of Pelican Reserve. A couple are driving their golf cart on the sidewalk, heading out of Pelican Reserve, and I'm at the trap gate and the guard person is standing outside the guardhouse smoking a cigarette. And I'm looking over at them and I'm looking at the couple and they just came bopping down the sidewalk, et cetera, and the guard person standing there seeing this did nothing.
Nothing. I think part of the answer to that is, I wasn't part of the committee, so I don't know, but when, when the contract was given to Securitas or when the, when the rules for what they, or the points they wanted when they were looking for a company or what they were expecting from a company, that wasn't something that was written into Securitas' contract that they would have enforcement authority. And I don't know if, if we even could have, but that would have been something I would have asked at the time, were I part of the committee.
Last but not least is this thing we've talked about regarding a lot of things here on the CDD communication. And although Sarah keeps sending out these small little emails and stuff, there are some people that don't do email, but the one thing that's consistent in our community is they do send out the property management bill every quarter.
Yeah, they do.
Having said that, that's one that everybody gets hit with and that's one that they should have, especially for those visually challenged like me, a font size of about thirty-six that says, the speed limit is, stop signs are, but no one seems to do that.
Well, that's certainly something I can take back and suggest to the committee as an alternative.
Excellent.
Ron has a Working Group that, that is trying to come up with ideas and the fact that when Sarah puts those reminders out, she at least now is saying, you know, golf carts belong on the road, bicycles belong in the bicycle lane, and pedestrians belong on the sidewalks, and automobiles belong in the...
Can we go, can we get on to business?
Well, if you want to.
I really do.
I have a question for Nancy.
All right.
Thank you, Nancy. I'd like to refer to page thirty-seven on the, thirty-seven on the agenda. This is with respect to fixed asset reserves for Pelican Preserve. Those, the numbers are wrong. If you look down that Pelican Preserve column, your additions to reserves for 2016 is 245,955.
Right.
That's in fact not a good figure. It should be $363,000.
Well, yeah, at the time that we looked at this...
I know there's a, probably a timing issue.
There was a timing issue?
Understood.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, if you wind back to page thirty-three on the agenda, you'll see my point.
No, I understand exactly what you're talking about.
Yeah, you've got $363,000 number on page thirty-three for next year's budget, so...
This, we thought it was the 200 and something number and this was something that Stephen did with some...
Understood. I don't want to make a big issue of it, but you're, you're, $117,000 out.
We're aware.
Thank you. Just one comment about the, what you were saying about putting money on CDs and so on. We, I mentioned to Stephen the same thing back in February and he did, he got hold of Iberia Bank. There was $2.3 million at the time sitting in the cash, cash in the bank in current assets. So he got Iberia to give us option A, option B. We chose option B. We're making an extra $30,000 a year now. And that, so I don't know why, Stephen will probably go down the same channel with you.
I'm sure he will. I think that would be very helpful to us to have Steve at the meeting.
Thank you. Yes.
Bill, are you, are you aware also what was brought up in item twelve?
I'm sorry, what?
You aware of what was brought up in item twelve?
Item twelve. Can you give me a page number?
Twenty-one.
I am, okay, I'm on forty-one.
Twenty-one.
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 I'm sorry.
Oh, are people attending the meetings?
No, it's, I didn't know that Sienna owns the golf, the path that goes behind it. And I was, my other question was, and so who's going to enforce that?
Oh, Ron, Ron DePont found this when he went to look at tax records. Sienna didn't know that they owned it, so...
I sure didn't know.
Well, none of us did, because that was the whole point of why he looked at it, was the, there was a discussion to change the sidewalk. So that's all currently under discussion about, does Sienna really own it? And if Sienna, if Sienna owns it, then they'd like to restrict it to pedestrians, not golf carts. So there's a whole big...
Hullabaloo.
Hullabaloo. So, just, just so that you know, our September meeting, and you'll see this when you get the, the minutes, we approved uplighting for the whole front of Pelican, so that should be happening soon. Also, Ron DePont's Working Group brought in that sign, speed limit sign that's been up there for a while. That sign takes pictures and that sign takes pictures of cars that are speeding. And so you can tell over a certain speed limit, whatever they set it at, how many, what percentage of the people are going over our speed limit and so forth. We decided that that was a good thing to have in the community. It will be able to be moved from one location to another as we detect problems and have that as an education. And that was, I think, a $5,000 investment that I think is going to turn out to be a pretty good investment. That's it.
Thank you, Nancy.
Next item is the Stony Brook Advisory Committee foresee. Joe, are you going to tell us anything we don't know?
I'll tell you why, I'll answer questions if you have some. But I have some questions for you from what I just heard, though. Because once you get that information for the speeding issue...
On the what?
The speeding issue, what do you do with it? Because that's been one of our problems. By the way, I'm Joe McCulker from Stony Brook Advisory Committee Chair. But in any case, I'm curious, what do you do with that information? Because the Gateway Services aren't going to come in and enforce on those rules. The, the police department in the case with you, it might be Fort Myers, I'm not sure. For us, it's Lee County, they will not come and enforce those things. And by law, we don't have the right to technically enforce it. We treat it as a hazard or a safety issue. And that's how we approach it. The master board handles it that way.
Well, when you have the answer to that, we'd love to hear it.
I know. Okay, I thought maybe you guys did. That's what, I was curious to see what it was. I heard about that particular device. It sounds interesting and I know my wife gets in there a lot and I think it's a good idea, but I just don't know what to do with it. Because we even stopped, we were doing speed checks and we don't do it anymore because it just became an exercise in futility, really. In any case, I did have one other thing, and this is pertaining to the issue of the pool. And now, I'll...
You've got to talk about the Gateway Pool or the...
I'm going to talk about the Gateway Pool because I do have a suggestion, and I know that Rod and I have talked about this. I just want to give you a basic fact. We just did our budget for Stony Brook, our own budget. And prior, the last year we had propane. We were going to use over $40,000 to heat that pool. We have a hot tub and a kitty pool. I did get it changed over to natural gas. We expanded the amount of hours. We heat 24/7 now, 365 days a year. And our gas bill for the fiscal last year, 2015, was $15,000. We saved sixty, over 60 percent and we heat it more than we ever did before. And the cost of the conversion was just $1,000 for us in the, less than, in our heaters. Now, I understand that you did get a quote, an estimate, to bring natural gas into the community. I will tell you, you'll probably recover that in the first year. So just, it's a thought. And to add a little confusion into that, I do have a solar heater for my pool and it's wonderful, too. I'm not sure how it works. It is seasonal. You need sunshine and in the wintertime, it's not as effective, obviously, but I just think natural gas has been wonderful. Saving $25,000 plus every year. So just food for thought. There is an issue going to be coming up and it is discussed very briefly in the minutes here. We have three members of the committee that have missed six or more meetings out of the last twelve. One has missed ten out of the last twelve. And we're looking for some guidance. I'd like to maybe use this limit of six or more than half of the meetings, maybe, if you're not making them. You really probably should be removed from the committee. And there might be a suggestion to that effect in the next Supervisor's meeting after our...
You've got to give us your recommendation.
And that's what I intend to do.
You can't just make your problem our problem.
No, 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 I understand. I agree, but I know that sometimes you do have some opinions on what we should and shouldn't do. And I'm just giving you a heads up on, you'll probably hear from us on that next time.
George, are these people are not attending and they're seasonal?
I will say no, that's not the case. One travels a lot. Another one in the last year had health problems, but there's a third one that just chooses not to come. And I'm not sure why, but nevertheless, I, we're going to make some recommendations.
I'm with the chairman on this. Whatever you think is reasonable, I would support you.
That's basically what I wanted to hear. And I made a comment at the minutes. I just wanted to take that back. I did go back, got into your website and everything worked fine. I had had problems previously and it seems to be okay now.
What's that with emails?
Yeah, I couldn't get the emails to come up.
Yeah, I was going to ask you about that.
Yeah, and we're good.
Okay.
It's okay now. Anything for me?
Please.
Yes, page forty-seven. I've got a couple of questions.
Sure.
Number one, it says that you had some kind of thing about cost of straw bales, ruts caused by a cement truck. And one of the first things that left out was verify the planting on Crooked Creek and notify Margaret Feinberg. Why?
Yeah, well, this is from L. Harris.
It's item, item four, item, second bullet.
Yeah, I'm looking at that right now. I was questioning the bales on $7 a bale for pine straw and it seemed like they're getting smaller every year and as the price goes up, but I guess it's like propane, I don't know. And, and I'm not sure, the other issue of the, of the ruts, we are, we put pads in for benches. We're going to install benches to be by our lakes so you can sit down and enjoy the scenery. And apparently the truck, when it backed up there, did some damage and it's something we took care of.
So it's nothing to do with us?
It's, it backed up across the area that is owned by Gateway, but we took care of it. It was, you know, it's...
Thank you. Okay, the other thing is, is regarding the trees that become part of the funding from the 001 fund.
Trees.
It's JT Thomas stated, anchor tree services proposal had a few trees he'll need to tag because the funding is from the 001 fund and will have anchor tree services send the invoice to the Gateway CDD.
I think that might have been confused because the, the trees that'll be tagged for removal that JT was referring to, I think, was more had to do with lighting. But there are trees that are dead that are along the lakes, in that easement area, along the lakes. There's a couple that are dead and need, they're not big. There were some of the original cypress that were planted that never really survived and they need to be removed.
Are you going to send us a bill for anything?
That one there, yeah, you're probably going to get a bill from us, because that is trees along the lake. It's part of the lake management system. They're cypress trees that, they're laterals that do suck up the things.
You'll have to, you're going to have to kick that stone pretty hard.
Okay, well, we've been there before. In fact, there were trees installed to replace ones that had been killed a couple of years ago.
Or beaten with a horse.
What's, no, no, oh, you're talking about in the preserve that JT's, but JT doesn't back up to a preserve.
Well, I thought you were talking about a preserve area.
Okay, I don't think that's a preserve area, but I could be incorrect.
Well, you guys get it worked out. If you're going to send us a bill... Well, you guys get it worked out. If you're gonna send us a bill, you need a good explanation.
The only ones, the only ones that you'll hear from, in the preserve area, that is an oh oh one issue, you do maintain that one actual documented preserve area. And JT doesn't back up to that. And, but the area and the, and the litorals around the, the lakes, as those cypress trees would be an issue. And it, it really isn't a big deal right now.
And last but not least, that you wanna move funds from your reserve account? Joe McCulca stated the board-
Oh, yes.
... quotes, paving walking paths. So I've had a problem in the past with the amount of reserves or the lack of an amount of reserves for Stony Brook. And now you wanna take away from the reserves and use that money. I'm not so sure that I'm so happy with that.
Well, what are we reserving for?
I guess you're reserving for taking care of all the assets that are there in the community so that we don't have to. And this may be a bone of contention, the CDD doesn't have to step up and take some money from us, the CDD, to you.
This is money that's in the oh oh four account that comes entirely from the residents of Stony Brook, just like the residents from-
Pelican Preserve, which have over a million bucks.
That's correct. And we have over a million bucks in our, that we maintain. If you wanna compare apples to apples-
Now, now, where's your million dollars?
We have in our, you're not turned over yet, if, in all honesty. And you can't compare Stony Brook to Pelican.
No, but I wanna, I wanna see how many dollars you just alluded to.
Let me finish. We pay for things that, right now, that you're reserving for. Let's say lake money. The lake money, we are full-time residents or participants in paying Gateway. We put full-time money into Gateway oh oh one fund. We pay the three hundred and fifty, whatever it's gonna be, that every other resident pays. So therefore, the reserve that you're comparing to is actually in the oh oh one fund right now. Things inside our community, we reserve for. We have our own reserves. We still, we run our community.
You just said though, Joe, rather than, you just said you've got a million bucks.
That's correct. For things that we run in our community.
Jerry Maguire, show me the money.
Well, we don't need money to back up and reserve for the lakes. That is in the oh oh one account. That's what it's for. That's why we pay them. We don't pay them fifty dollars per door per year. We pay them three hundred and fifty dollars per door per year.
How much money do you have in reserves?
About a hundred and twenty, a hundred and ten thousand dollars right now. And all that we reserve for in that account is for roads and for sidewalks. And this is a sidewalk that is on Gateway property, and it should come out of that reserve account.
How about the gatehouse?
The gatehouse, we actually, uh, have in the past covered that, and that's an issue right now, is for, is expenses for that in the gatehouse. Um-
They got about forty thousand bucks.
No, look at the balance sheet. Balance sheet shows what the accumulated is over a period of time.
Well, you've got about forty thousand dollars in ex, in excess from the, from the fifteen, fifteen years.
Fifteen, right. And that would add into probably about a hundred and ten from the previous year then. But, uh, you're comparing apples to oranges. When you compare what Pelican has in the reserve and what we do, we're in two different stages of development of our community. You're not complete yet. We are. We run ourselves. We have our own money. You do have assets in our community. I agree to that. The, the lakes, that's the oh oh one fund. The streets, sidewalks, oh oh four, and all the money in that oh oh four account comes from Stony Brook residents. There is no other money in there. And we never asked for oh oh one money for any of that.
Let's, let's, let's not argue about that right now.
Just brought some items to light.
And let's not bring up ancient history when we had to bail them out and hope it never happened again.
You had to bring that up, Bill.
Yeah, well, you, you were not, you're not so subtle.
Let's just, just keep in mind, a similar thing happened when WCI went bankrupt. Though you had to set up those accounts for that purpose. And these were assets that probably should not have been paid for with HOA funds. And then you know what happened to the economy at that point in time. It should've been set up as probably a separate, uh, CDD account.
Joe, we wanna move, we wanna move on.
I agree.
We appreciate your coming.
Okay.
Enlightening.
We'll talk about the, the, the thing for the next one. I'll probably come up next minute.
All right.
So are we gonna put those to bed?
Yeah, we're, no, those are just, those are just, those are just committee reports. We don't have to take any action on them.
Okay.
The, the next item is the consent agenda, item five A and B. And we do need to take action on those. If there are members who wanna talk about, uh, the approval of the last minutes or the landscape design planning RFQ, please, uh, let me know, and we'll talk about them separately. Yes, sir?
Item five A.
Five A, all right. And Gary, are you okay with the item?
I'm okay.
All right, the, the minutes of the, uh, September third meeting, page please.
Fifty-two. Danny, could I, could I have a word, please, on, on this? This is by way of a follow-on from the previous discussions. I'm looking at the first bullet point on page fifty-two. Yeah, um, it talks about, if you're, and it reminds me of the discussions we had, uh, on the third of September. We talked about providing, I know you're doing an awful lot of work with the ponds, get, greater Gateway ponds, and looking at the prioritization. You're working with the ponds, um, voluntary ponds group, and that's great. Um, but we did, I did ask if you could at some point provide a list of all of our ponds, sixty-four or whatever the number is, with how old they are, which, whether we have an operating firm, and who owns them.
Is it sixty-four or fifty-nine?
Whatever the number. I'm trying to make a point. Are we still, is that something you're gonna provide still?
Yes, and we have a, we have a start. We have a good amount of it. We don't have everything. So I have about, yeah, seventy-five percent of that information.
But you, but you're onto it, and that's what you're gonna produce?
Yes.
And that's part of, presumably part of the prioritization, reprioritization you're gonna come up with.
Yes.
That's, that's it. Thank you.
Is that it, Rod?
Yeah, on five A, yes.
And what about B? Did you have anything on B?
Well, at five B, um, it's five B, this is an RFQ, and is it asking the board to do anything? Well, what is the, what is it, what is the purpose of five B being on this agenda?
Information.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
And if, if the board had any objections or felt it wasn't all-inclusive, or they weren't heading in the right direction, then they would like that feedback.
Now, my only comment I made earlier to Paul is that it seems strange to me that the, the, the landscape architect that we're using for the mediums isn't listed for the master plan. But I've had my, I've expressed my thoughts on that.
Would you make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Yes, I, I make the motion.
Would you second, we have a motion and a second all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, that's three to zero. Motion is carried. We're at, uh, item six, business items, fiscal year sixteen, Gateway Fund vehicle purchase. You have a Ford one fifty you want us to approve. Is that so?
I do, and you need the information. Yeah. And you have, uh, before you, the, uh, business item about the additional vehicle. Uh, it was in the capital improvement budget. And, um, we have, uh, looked at other vehicles and compared pricing, and, um, there's been a relationship, uh, continued business with the Galway Ford. Uh, we do get, you have the paperwork in here on the price. Um, I do have, uh, there is a discount for, uh, our, um, status with them and all. And the numbers that are on the, uh, second sheet that show the, uh, the breakout of the, of the items, um, one item under Florida tag title and lean records, five hundred and ten dollars. That's a placeholder the computer automatically generates. We do have special, um, circumstance, I'll put it that way. The real cost is when we get down and, and sign up through the county, uh, is about a hundred and ten, a hundred and fifteen dollars on that line item. But Galway can't do that. We have to go down to the county tag agency and do that.
So we're gonna pay four hundred bucks less than what you've got on this, uh, purchase order?
Right. This is, um, you know, we haven't, again, I, on my cover sheet, I put down some approximate values. We haven't gone down to the, the final numbers yet, uh, provided we, we move in that direction. So that's what I'm asking for today.
Motion for approval?
Yeah, I wanna discuss.
Say again?
I wanna discuss.
Well, we, uh, please go ahead. Why do we need this?
We have, um, we have more employees than we do vehicles, for one. We need this vehicle primarily for the use of the, uh, recreation facilities maintenance, uh, crew, um, to go out, and it'll be added to our, our motor pool. Um, it is a, we, we have four people in utilities. We have two in maintenance. We have natural resources, and then we have management.
Why would management need to drive this truck?
We have to go look at things, meet with residents.
Why wouldn't we better than for management have something like a Prius, rather than having this big truck putting out a bunch of fumes, and we're supposed to be, Gateway goes green?
Well, this, this is, this is, again, for the recreation maintenance crew, uh, for the majority of the time, and can be utilized to go address water meters or other things in the utility department.
Why would we need a truck to go out there? Why, I thought that's why we got the gators.
Well, at times we carry ladders. We carry materials, uh, paint buckets. We tow the pressure washer.
May I continue the question to, and-
Sure.
-understanding that you'll reserve your time and come back?
Absolutely.
Scott, do I understand it correctly that this recommendation is for an additional, not a replacement vehicle? So this will increase our rolling stock?
It, it is an additional vehicle. Um, the trucks we bought last year and the year prior to that are a four-wheel drive vehicles. This is a two-wheel drive vehicle. Uh, this is a less weight, and those are the big super crew, the, the four-door things. This is just a two-door truck with a little back area on it. So it's a smaller, lighter, uh, vehicle.
And how many vehicles will we own that are roadworthy if we buy this?
We have our, our primary utility vehicle, a Ford if, uh, what is it, a five fifty, which is the crane truck. It's a utility truck. Um, and then we have, this will be the third pickup truck.
The third pickup truck?
We have two existing, and this'll be a third.
There's no other roadworthy vehicles that we own?
Uh, we have, then we have two gators that are the all-terrain vehicles that are, they're not roadworthy now.
You don't, you don't drive those on the highway. They're not licensed to drive on the highway.
No, they're not.
Thank you. Please continue.
I'm just, I've seen the use of our trucks by management and doing the things, and I've looked at it and said, what a gross misuse of something of this size when certainly something of a much more ecological-friendly, um, would be much more indicative of the fact that we actually care about the environment, plus also driving around something like it just doesn't make any sense to me whatsoever. And in fact, I would say that before we would make this kind of expenditure, there should've been some kind of indication of study of the fact of, hey, on this particular date, we needed this particular vehicle. There's none. It's just kind of a general thing, and we're asked to spend twenty-seven thousand bucks.
In regard of this, this is coming out of fiscal sixteen budget, and we, and we, uh, went through those capital line items.
We did, we threw it in there.
Item by item.
But if we don't need it, why spend it?
I can't argue. I can't argue that.
We, we-
Can you, can you, uh, give us some logic why a little Ford Focus, or as Gary said, a Prius or something, wouldn't be as useful or almost as useful?
Again, the primary focus of the use of this vehicle is for the facility and maintenance of our common areas, our parks, um, and through our community, the right-ofways and things. And, uh, they pick up debris, they pick up, uh, they tow the, the pressure washer to clean the monuments. We carry, uh, materials, uh, be it, you know, a multitude of things. We use it every day to, to carry our tools and things and go out and dress, fill the potholes at the dog park. We go, we, we pick up dead branches when the man's gave, can't get there. We, we carry paint buckets. We carry our ladders. We carry our other materials and equipment to take care of the needs of the community that, that we have our maintenance facility for.
But we've been able to do that with the equipment we already have.
And we've hired two more people that can go out and help do other tasks. There are many a days that I use my own vehicle because there's no vehicle available. As well as Yvonne, and, um, we, and then the people can't go out and address what they need to.
Scott, I mean, the Jack here, you, you allow me, you know, I have no time to wish for something. In reality, we are short of vehicles here. For example, this week I had to drive my car more than two times, my personal cars, to go to see some projects. We don't have enough vehicles here. That's a need. I agree with Scott. If we're gonna buy a vehicle that is for a working, uh, group, we need to have something that is a truck. But at the same time, since we don't have, it's either, you know, I, I understand what you're saying. Let's buy something that is, uh, feel efficient, like a Prius. But then, the maintenance people will not have a good use of this vehicle. So if we buy a truck, everybody can use a vehicle. But if we buy a Prius, it's not gonna serve any purpose for the maintenance guys. And that's why we are proposing this one. But it, it, we are short of vehicles here. We can do studies on all this stuff, and we can keep a track of all of them. But I can tell you, this week I had to use my car three times to see the projects.
But again, when you say that, you could've used a Prius three times.
Well, if we buy a truck and a Prius, yes. But they need a truck. The maintenance people need a truck.
But Yvonne, that's, when we're spending this kind of money, it would be reasonable for you to come and say, hey, on these number of days over the last six months, six, six weeks, two weeks, et cetera, we needed something of a truck-type quality, and we didn't have it. And we had to rearrange schedules, and we lost time. But there's none of that that's here. It's just, it's in the budget. You had it as a capital improvement plan. Let's spend twenty-seven thousand bucks. You've gotta keep better records. You've got to be able, just like Joe was here. He could tell you every day, every person where they went, yada yada.
But I see every day people waiting in the garage on there for somebody to come so they can take their vehicle and, and do something. You see there-
And the Gator wouldn't have done it, huh?
No, because the Gators are out in the field all the day, all day long.
Why not?
Every day you come here, and there is not a single car here, and people waiting for something else.
Okay. Motion for approval?
Not yet. I, I need to comment, please. I haven't had a chance to comment. Instinct, instinctively, Cal and Scott, I, I, I want to support, because I assume that you've done your homework and you actually need what you're asking for. That's my, that's where I'm at with this thing. However, in business, when you're asked to spend twenty-seven thousand dollars, typically, it's, it's a no-brainer. You've gotta put a, you've gotta one-page justification to do, and, and it isn't here. That's all it is. And I think that's what Gary's alluding to, if I can put it in different, different words. Um, what I'm saying, I'm sorry. What I'm saying is that I'm trying to understand, I know you've got a new recreation and facilities manager on board now, Anthony, and you've got a new guy working for Terry. Um, presumably those are the additional people that's driving this decision. Is that correct?
Yes.
And I just wanted to, I'd feel happier just saying, yeah, I'm not really on the same page as Gary about whether we have a Prius or not. I'm more concerned about justifying whether we need another vehicle. And I'd, I'd prefer to approve it on the basis of a, just a one-page justification. Here's what we've done, and here's the additional people. Here's what we're gonna need it for. And then I'd be happier. And that's, that's what's missing.
Well, we did, uh, put justifications for the CIP in the budget. There's a sheet per item.
Okay.
I don't have that copied with me, but that was provided. And as far as a log and all that, I'll be happy to prep, start doing that.
And I, and I didn't realize that, honestly, or else I'd have revealed that before this meeting.
Every CIP item, I believe, has a justification sheet, an explanation sheet with it.
If they, if this can wait two weeks, I would prefer to see it, uh, to- If thi, if this can wait two weeks, I would prefer to see a, to see a one-page justification of why we need this vehicle, from my standpoint.
Okay.
And if we need the Prius on top of that, show us that you need it, but it should be something that's substantiated.
Okay.
Will you prepare that and bring this back to us?
We'll do.
Thank you.
And Scott is just telling you, yes, whatever you want, but how about if you do this? Read what's in the CIP.
Okay.
And if that doesn't answer your questions, get with Scott or Yvonne or myself and say, you know, we really need to know this or that.
Okay.
I, I could tell from Scott's reaction that he said, I've done this.
I can tell that, I, I can read that also. But for me reading this meeting book, it would have been, it would have probably been helpful to me if I could, if the CIP justification would have been put in that meeting book.
Going forward, that's a good helpful suggestion that we'll do, but before he writes up something else, you guys will look at that, say, no, it really doesn't answer the questions, can you do this?
I don't know where to find that, frankly.
It's in, it's in the budget.
All I'd ask is, this is gonna appear in the next meeting book, then put that page in the next meeting book.
That's what I'm saying.
Just put it in, I don't want.
All right.
I'm looking at the CIP, fiscal sixteen.
Right.
And the vehicle pickup truck is gonna be charged ten thousand five hundred dollars to the general fund and twenty-four five to the enterprise fund. Is that still your intention?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We'll look forward to seeing it in two weeks.
All right, so put the CIP description that's good right now?
And if you feel it needs filling out a bit more, then fill it out, just let's see who needs it and why.
Sure.
And if you need to have something that management is driving around, then let us know that, but we need more information. It should be, it should be habitual that way.
Thank you, we look forward to seeing that in two weeks. Can we talk about the LaSalle Academy of Mountfield usage? I saw your picture on a sled.
Yes.
I did too. I don't read that.
It was an improvement, Scott.
Yes, it was.
I'm only kidding.
No debate. They came to, De La Salle Academy is a nonprofit school and they're here in Fort Myers and they are looking to do a, a one-day fundraiser, January thirtieth. They want to occupy fields one and two, they want to be able to use our parking lot and they're gonna set up vendors and bounce houses and things. The snow activity will not be on the soccer field, will not cause any damage to that. I, I personally know these folks. I built their facility prior to them moving and they were unable to attend today, unfortunately. They had a engagement, another activity with the kids. This is a school that does, for children with learning disabilities and a very worthwhile effort, you research them, you know, please do speak to Bonnie or Lori, who's the director. And so they're asking for, to use our facility and I'm going out on them recommending we waive the five hundred dollar, or four hundred fifty dollar equivalent fee because it is a nonprofit. We do waive fees when other nonprofits use our facilities such as Gateway Gives, of course, they also give back a lot, we get benches and picnic tables and things like that. You know, we haven't had a lot of nonprofits that I know of in my short time here, two years, that have come forward and want to use our facilities and things. It's not gonna conflict with any other schedules, they expect, it's open to the public, so all the kids from Gateway can come and everything else and hopefully they do, you know, advertise it and things. But anyway, it's a, bringing this forward for, one, to, for them to utilize our, our facilities here for that one day and if possible, to waive the fee.
Motion for approval?
I just want to ask Tony, what's our liability?
Oh, we always, once again, we always have the potential exposure, I always assume we have a, a usage or license agreement with requisite insurance.
We do.
And waiver, and so we'll have all that in place.
Yep, I reviewed that with them today and.
We'll have certificates of insurance naming the district as an additional insured.
Okay, and the second thing is, is who does the cleanup?
Well, they have volunteers and things.
I think we can incorporate that into the agreement.
Yeah, they, they are responsible for cleaning up, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And I am.
That's all in the, in the standards.
Okay, Scott, are they gonna need the floodlights?
No, it's a daytime activity.
Okay, that didn't say and I just wondered.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. And where have they been before? Where, which locations have they used before? Do you happen to know?
Uh, I know that they use their own property, which they have outgrown.
Oh, they've outgrown it?
They have about a hundred and I think about a hundred forty kids and, oh, I don't know, I'm thinking sixty percent are on scholarship program and this is to help raise money for those.
Sure, I read the write-up and I, I support.
Does this grade's one through which?
I don't think they have kindergarten now, I think they are, or, no, they don't have preschool, so it might be one through twelve.
Where are they at?
Right now, they are off Plantation Road, they purchased the old Bobby Noonan's by just north of Daniels Tech Drive or wherever that street is. They're right on the corner, it was a Bobby Noonan's facility. Prior to that, they used to be in a temporary facility off of Daniels and.
Yep.
Appaloosa, right across from Two Meatballs.
It's, it's a great cause, I, I would support special needs kids every time.
There we go, aye.
Aye.
Are you motion for approval?
Aye, 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 aye.
We've got two ayes here.
Aye.
I'm on the motion, Gary's, Gary.
I second it, we said aye.
And we all vote yes.
And I'm glad you're sticking your neck out, Scott, I like that.
Pardon me?
You said you're sticking your neck out and go, recommending we go ahead, I, I prefer that for activity.
Just forget the truck, but you give your.
Basically, for an organization like this.
Yvonne, we gotta walk on. All right, district staff reports, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, we've received, I received the check last Friday, ninety thousand dollars, sent it to the manager, they deposited it, I'm waiting for a word that the funds have cleared, then we will exchange dismissals and releases at that time.
Is that what these were about?
Yes, and I will hold those until we have all the clear funds.
Like to give them to me then?
So we can sign them and then I would, and when the funds are cleared, I will send them to the other party to be signed and then. Save somebody knocking on your door in the dead of night. Nothing further.
That's it?
Yes, sir.
Fine. Mr. Engineer?
Yeah, I think there are actually three items on here, the bathymetric, we've already talked about. Item B three, we want to defer that to the next meeting, that's the matter, either three utility improvements turnover. And then the pre-qualification form, so I think you have in your packet, the pre-qualification, this is for the bank stabilization, so we'd like to, what we'd like to do is advertise, we're gonna come to you in two weeks, is more of a full discussion on the whole lake, not just the lake banks, we have gone out and done a reprioritization, so we want to move forward with getting the surveying going, the design. While we're working on those items, we'd like to release this to, to advertisement and we would like to start using that DemandStar process and then we can seek getting actual contractors in that we can pre-qualify and I think that'll help us out a lot in moving forward with, with getting good bids.
Thanks Danny. On this pre-qualification form, should we at this stage be thinking about pre-qualifying them on the basis that they have a capacity to put down a performance bond or to offer a warranty for X years or should there be Propex certified, all those things? Is this the place to be doing all that?
You, you, you can, yes, this would be an appropriate place to put those items, so we could certainly add that, add that to this.
Okay, thanks.
You want us to approve this form with, with that adjustment, is that what you're looking for?
Yes, please.
Motion for approval?
Aye.
We have motion in a second, anything further? All in favor say aye. Aye, three zero. Thank you very much, Mr. Engineer, Mr. Manager.
The only thing I had, we did meet with Aquagenics last Friday and many of the items that we'd identified in the review that I performed and gave to you a couple weeks ago, was, they claimed it was Gatos that had, you know, given them permission, so we've asked for some sort of verification, which they haven't supplied yet, but I believe they will.
This is on the photographic?
Uh, yes, the photographic and also the inspection frequency. So, we have that and then what, what I told them we're gonna do is put together a contract amendment and that reflects the items and the concerns that the board has where it's clearly spelled out and then see if they're willing to do that contract at no increase. If not, then we'll come back to the board with a recommendation to bid it out. We also opened the door on renegotiations of the wetlands and so we're about the same place, we just ran out of time after a couple hours on that.
The start of the timing on this, Cal, amending the Aquagenics contract, it would seem to me to make sense to accommodate this pond standards document that we've all been wrestling with for a number of months now and hopefully in the next few weeks we'll come to a head and come to the board for approval. Once that's done, then surely there'll be some fallout from that that can be put into the Aquagenics contract.
Yes, I'm trying to think of what there would be, but let me look at it and it could be, yeah.
Whether it be littoral, maintenance, whatever.
Right.
But there's some pond standards in there that are gonna be relevant to the Aquagenics contract amendments.
Okay.
Just wanna keep that timing together.
Yeah. And that's all I have. Uh, Scott, you got anything?
Uh, I do have one of the. I just, I don't have, have my notes, but want to let you know that we had our first coordination meeting with WCI's contractor Ajax on the road rehab work. It was this past Wednesday morning, we're gonna hold them every two weeks. It's a combined meeting between WCI, Ajax, their engineer, Holmontaz, along with our team, PMI and Mainscape and our engineers as well. And it's to coordinate all the efforts going on for the next five to six months with their improvements. They did start, their notice to proceed was September twenty-first, they're beginning with tree removal in the medians and along the right-of-way that the county is requiring, mostly on the southern end of Gateway Boulevard. They are staging and accepting delivery now of drainage structures that'll be placed in the median and they'll take road crossings at, I think, six or seven locations on Gateway Boulevard, take median drainage out to the swales. So all that's been engineered and they have a Lee County development order on that. So there's surveying going on for these road crossings, they plan on next week starting, and they're gonna be night operations. That way they don't conflict and tie up all the traffic on Gateway Boulevard during the day. They will be maintaining traffic north and southbound, they'll be shifting them over to one side or the other. They, well, I'll be starting probably around six P M, installing the drainage structures, the pipe crossing, backfilling, they're gonna use what they call concrete flowable fill that has to set up, which it's, it's rapid setup and then they come in and patch with asphalt. And hopefully that'll be wrapping up at probably by three A M or somewhere in there. And most of this area is, is on the southern end of Gateway Boulevard. From Timber Ridge, south, from Fairway Isles, southward. That's gonna be happening over the next two weeks. Let's see, they, again, where there's a lot of discussion about them doing it at night and amongst that commercial area, there's no, you know, no residents in there other than, maybe the first section, there will be some folks within earshot on the northern end of that, that midsection. But overall, it's the least impact to the greater number. Again, they, they hope to be done with all the heavy stuff by, by midnight and two in the morning, somewhere in there, get that paving done. So that's the plan that they've given us for the next two weeks. We are adding that right up and posting it on the website to make all aware.
You said Gateway Boulevard twice, I would have thought you were gonna say Griffin Drive.
They have six, I think, or six or seven crossings on Gateway Boulevard that they have to install. Both on the northbound and the southbound, they have crossings from the median to take drainage out to the swales.
Okay, thank you. All right, board members?
One more thing, I beg your pardon, I'm sorry, I just remembered the rest of my notes. Meanwhile, on Griffin Drive, our crew, PMI, they're continuing to do the grading and backfilling around the two new pathways and sodding up and down there. At the end of this month, they'll come in and they'll do the final milling and paving of Griffin Drive from Gateway Boulevard to the power lines, as scheduled for the last week of October.
I'm not really that disappointed, but I was hoping that you would have something that you could pass out to the board members, that we, of things we've been working on to get chronologically correct with the people who are responsible for each one of these jobs on the lakes and the fact that you're gonna be responsible for it with the chairman to review it and apparently you're not ready to share that with us yet, but you will be shortly, right?
I believe a draft was sent to you a few days ago.
I haven't seen it.
Okay. We've been working with Danny and his folks and we've come up with a detailed Gantt chart that defines all the elements and with a critical path that's indicated on there and duration, start, stop and all the activities and so, I shared that with you and Cal.
I got it.
I didn't, I haven't seen it.
Is this Gantt chart digital, it's gonna be emailed to people or is it a big sheet of paper?
They have scaled it down, it's, it's a PDF on, on one sheet.
Anyway, this is.
It's music to my ears.
This is in response to Mr. Newbauer's very correct statement at the last meeting that this is exactly what we need or one of the things we need and we just, I just wanted him and other board members and the attorney and everybody to know that it did not fall on deaf ears, we are moving on it and hopefully you'll see at least a draft shortly, right?
Wanted to review it in-house before we send it out.
That's smart, that's really smart. Are you finished?
Yes, sir.
Do you have anything, Gary?
Yes, thank you. And I'd ask for your forbearance, but this might take ten minutes at the most, but it's important, otherwise I wouldn't be bringing it up. Before I do, I just want to ask Yvonne, Yvonne, and this may actually be part and parcel of what, what we've just been talking about on the Gantt chart, but a few meetings ago, Danny and Tyler presented a pretty concerning analysis of our existing utilities, you know, the things have got a lot of sand in there, various things weren't working, you remember that report?
Yes, sir.
And, and we had a dialogue and you said that you were gonna put together some kind of a broad preventive maintenance program.
Yes, I am working on that.
And I asked you how long it would take and you said thirty days.
It's taking a little longer than.
That's okay, I just want, it doesn't matter.
No, I'm working on that.
I just wanted to make sure it's on the radar, Scott.
What I'm doing is I'm preparing for each one of the activities, I'm preparing a standard operating procedure so everybody knows.
Okay.
For example, in the pump session, how often they have to go over there and open it up, when to pull the pump, what to do.
Will this, will this be all part of the district, the Gantt chart?
So we are going, we are going, what we are going to do, we are going to.
Is that different?
Yeah, we are going to prepare kind of a booklet.
Okay.
And it's going to have a series, who is going to be performing the work, if it's gonna be done by contractor or a contractor or by the staff and all this stuff.
I just want to make sure that you're, that you're still working on it and it's.
I am kind of about three quarter done, but there's too many stuff that they pulled you out.
Very good, thank you, Yvonne. Another small point before I go on to the, the big point, email addresses, Tony and I have had meetings, discussions about this whole idea of digital communications with residents. My original proposal was to send out a letter in the water bills, in the water bill to see, invite people to submit their email addresses so we can communicate with them for e-news. so we can communicate with them for e-news letters, emergency bulletings, instant response surveys, and so on. And there was some concern on, by one or two people that this would be subject to public record and therefore some residents may not like their private email address becoming public. So I discussed an alternative idea with Tony of coming out with a gatewaydistrict.org email address for every resident and then they can go to a third party host like Network Solutions or GoDaddy, whatever, where they can put, insert their forwarding address without our knowledge. And then the question is, is that public record? Does that successfully get around or deal with the public records? And that would require an attorney general's opinion, which would take six hours of Tony's time, which is about 900 bucks, plus possibly some web development time to do the feed through from our portal to a third-party site. So I'm not kind of, I'm not wanting to instantly spend that kind of money. And I'm wondering, and Tony came up with this idea yesterday and I thought it was worth pursuing, that at least to test whether we can, what success we would have is to use one HOA community and Gateway Greens, our Gateway Greens will be an example, where we, Tinkles the President, so we all know Ed very well, and he's been supportive of other email blasts that I've done in my community, like the Comcast deal and the Road Turnover Committee. I did the email and the Survey Monkeys for that. The idea might be that, Tony, that we could take the idea of going through Alliant Property Management, who handles the email list for Gateway Greens, send out an, an email to them all from the district saying, you know, the district would like to, wishes to set up an email register. Would you like to submit your email to us if you'd like to be on that register? And then a disclaimer at the bottom saying, please know that when you reply to this, your email will be a public record, whatever lingo you want to put there. I'd like to do that, if the board has no problem.
I'm gonna give you double zantica.
Yeah.
The key is, is that you're putting it into a controlled situation where, and the controlling thing is the fact that you've got an influence person that's really giving us a model that is unique to itself as compared to putting it out to Silver Lakes or Magnolia Lakes or Timber Ridge, which doesn't have that influence of a person.
No, I'm not suggesting that Tinkles gets involved. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
No, I'm suggesting that the district for, and I'll-
Could you keep them out of it?
Absolutely.
I don't think you can.
Yeah, we did, I've done it before where we just go through Alliant Property Management and we say-
Okay. Cause it can't be, it can't be an influence thing or else we're getting bad, a bad model.
I didn't communicate very well, I'm afraid.
Okay.
What I'm saying is the district puts together with my help and with Tony's, a simple little email blast. They'll feed it through Alliant and ask them-
I have no problem with that. I just wanna be non-influenced.
There'll be no personal influence.
Yeah, and I guess part of the question was whether or not, when Alliant sends it out, they would ask if all the responses go back to Alliant, if anybody-
Well, it could come straight to the district.
If it does, then it's our, then it's public record.
And we've told, we'll tell them that if they reply to this, it'll be public record. And then the purpose of all this, we'll know what percentage of people are actually interested before we go ahead going down the attorney general.
Well, I got lost a little bit in the communication. I don't know, but maybe it's me. What we're hoping to find is to be able to have a thing that essentially, so you're still wanting to do this rather than spending 900 bucks, so to speak.
Right.
To find out if we get an attorney, attorney general opinion, which is really what we're kinda looking for.
It is what we would have to do if with this private email address thing didn't get many respondents because of the concern.
I don't think that a lot of people, as soon as they see the possibility that their email address, no matter what kind of address, is going public record, maybe. I think it's going to have people running to the hills. I'm, as conservative as I am about money spending, I'd rather spend the 900 bucks if the rest of the board feels that it gives us a product that we really want.
Recognizing that you never know what the answer's gonna be from the attorney general.
Hey, everything from an attorney is always, I can't, and that's okay.
Reliance on advice of counsel is not an absolute defense.
Correct.
Having said that-
What I'm saying is-
It is helpful to have an attorney general's opinion. Having said that, if you're gonna try and skirt the law, it's helpful to have an attorney general's opinion.
Without an, so that's my suggestion is, is in support of this. I'm more supportive of let's go with the 900 bucks and let's, now, if you wanna wait until the other two board members are here, but I'm expressing my opinion and I don't see it's gonna change, I think that I'd rather get that attorney general opinion.
I'm with you. Don't go any, don't go any further.
Well, therefore, could I, could I move then that we asked, that you would allow me to work with Tony to proceed forth on that basis?
I think Bill will second that.
I will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. And the last point, I'm gonna hand this out to remind you of something that was in Joe Di Servo's Ordinary to Extraordinary Report, if you remember that one, in the white binder.
I do, I do. We are good.
Tony.
Thank you, sir.
Joe Di Servo gave, made 23 recommendations altogether. A couple of them, one of them we're already acting on, and that's the job functions. And Joe came down here, as you know, and Scott and Cal have been working with Joe and Scott's working with Vista Logix to try and get this job functions thing put in shape. So we've got some timesheets effectively and we know what people are doing. And that's great. That's one of the items that was top of the pops for Joe. A second item is, and I know, Mr. Chairman, you remarked at the time when Joe Di Servo was sitting here, that this whole list of, of people that he was handing to us, you know, sources of, great sources of information for grants, legislative funds, and website, I know Scott's been talking to Joe's website person from Vista Logix, Brian Haas. These people are incredibly valuable to us in terms of getting some money into the district by way of grants or appropriations. So here's what I've done about it. I wanna bring you up today. If you look at the orange highlighted names there, we've got David Ramber and Corbett Alday. Now, David Ramber is a lobbyist in Tallahassee and an extremely very successful. He flew down to meet me on Monday. I met him at the private sky there at, at RSW. He's got his own private aircraft. He flew in to meet me from Tallahassee. We went for lunch on my nickel, which I won't be claiming. And we talked for an hour and a half about what he could do for us. And here's what he can do for us. In Tallahassee at the moment, at state level, there are $600 million in non-recurring revenue, and that's from overcollecting of sales tax. Okay, that's 600, it doesn't happen every year. There's currently $600 million. And they, and the state are looking to find home for that money. And entities like ours who are doing things for the environment and water quality will qualify very highly for, for a piece of that money. And he personally is connected with Matt Caldwell and Lizbeth Benequisto, who's our representative and senator for this area, and he is confident that he can get us a piece of that pie. Secondly, there is BP. BP, as you're aware, has, there's been a major settlement for those entities who have been affected by the BP spill, where you can prove cause. We decided, I was, and then sitting in the audience at the Times, you, you probably remember, Gary, or Bob Nielsen was involved, that the, the board decided that they were not going to pursue any claims from, on the BP front for economic damages resulting.
Right.
However, there is another fund, and that's called the BP FINE.
FINE?
The BP FINE, F-I-N-E. It's a fine, which is for non-ecco, non-economic damages. Okay? And that is just a straight fine. And there are four states involved, Florida, Mississippi, Alabama, and Texas. And there's $4 billion in that fund. Okay, when you don't have to prove cause.
How did Louisiana get skipped?
I don't know. This is what David Ramber's gave to me. Next year, 2016 alone, in that BP FINE fund for Florida, Florida is $224 million. And the state is, is, has to find a home for that money. So with that 600 million and the 224, it's worth, in my opinion, taking a serious look at hiring this lobbyist guy that Joe Di Servo recommended to get a piece of that money. David Ramber has got $800,000 in for Spring Lakes in the last two years. That's what he's done for Spring Lakes.
What kind of a, what kind of a contract has he, has-
He charges, he charges a flat rate of $2,000 a month for a 12-month contract.
And for that-
He will, in one sum or what?
Monthly.
And for that, he'll do precisely-
He will do, he will lobby for us based upon the money that we're spending on our lake, our lake improvements projects. He will lobby for us to get a piece of both of those funds. And, and, and he's had a success rate which is extremely high. He's got 800,000 with Spring Lakes. In addition to that, Tony, you asked me another question. Would he be willing to help with any amendments or getting before the legislative, legislation and their revisions next year for 190? Yes, he will do that for part of that fund, for that fee.
Would you ask him to send us a written proposal for us to consider?
Yes, I will. Now, I asked him about timing because legislative assemblies typically, we're talking about legislative appropriations here. That's typically in April when the legislation makes those decisions. But next year is in January to May, January to March. So this ringing the timeframe back. If we're gonna hire this guy, then we need to decide either today or on October the 15th, because he has to have those presentations in for mid-November deadline. That's, and yes, I can summarize this into the meeting book for the next meeting.
Yeah, I want, I wanna, I wanna, I want a written proposal from him along with a list of his clients.
Okay.
And if everything you say is as I understood it, I, I'd be 100% favorable.
Mr., I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
In the conversation with Mr. Senior, I asked the question, would the lobbying be both the executive as well as both, you know, the Senate and the House, you know, executive offices? And he indicated yes, I believe.
Yes.
It'd be the legislative and executive side.
He walks the corridors, he walks the corridors every day. He knows all the people. He knows how to get this stuff. I mean, in your opinion, Tony, as a, as a lawyer and as a business guy, what do you think of that deal?
Based upon my experience with lobbyists dealing with legislature, I think that's a very good, reasonable cost and fee, based upon my knowledge of other local lobbyists to represent other local interests in Tallahassee.
Okay.
So when, so when and if we get the grant of whatever it is, what do we owe for getting that grant money?
But it is returning. It doesn't take a piece of what he gets. Is that what you mean?
No, no, no. Well, what I'm saying is, is, you know, in the past, when we took these other bond things and public funds, and suddenly our pool became public, and are we going to wind up having public lakes? Are we?
No, that's not the way I understand it.
The answer is likely, but you just can't answer those questions specifically until you see how the appropriation is written.
And your grant is written.
Can, well, can then, this gentleman in the information that he sends us, give us some idea based upon his expertise, what our obligations might be?
You could ask him to do that. That's a, that's a kind of a tough nut to crack though, since it's, the appropriation hasn't been written.
I understand.
And most of them are written similar to past ones, but with what Rod explained to us, it, it looks like we're starting to reinvent the wheel almost on these things.
Why not ask?
No question.
We may have a surprising answer from the guy in-
Oh, I, I don't, I don't disagree, but I just think it's kind of a tough nut for him to-
No, but I'm asking to please ask.
And for, once again, one thing that, when he provides his list of clients, the floor's website provides, you can search lobbyists just by way of example.
What are you doing, looking at his website there?
I'm looking at the lobbyist registration's website. And I don't represent, I don't know the gentleman, but he represents Associated Industries of Florida, which is a very powerful lobbying group, AT&amp;T, Robert Bush Foundation for Family Literacy, Henderson Development, Cedar Hammock Fire Control, City of Daytona, City of South Daytona. So once again-
Sounds like he's real, huh?
Uh, yes, Florida Chiropractors Association.
Oh, now you're talking.
Concrete, those are representative clients he's listed. The state has, all lobbyists are registered, and so you can go search who he represents.
Can we just tell Rod to get in contact with Mr. Ramber, I guess it is?
David Ramber.
Ramber, and get a proposal for her, or do we need, do we need a resolution?
I think it's appropriate for the board to look at the transactional terms, so there's no question. So I think it's reasonable to have a contract along the terms as Mr. Senior has outlined and have it at the next board meeting with the list of clients.
Yes, but do you need a resolution for him, allowing him to do that?
No, no, sir.
But you've got three to zero, right?
Yeah.
Thank you. The last point at the bottom of that same page, I want, I want, I would like to say, I've talked to Corbett Alday a number of times. Here's what this guy does. He's based in Date City, you know where that is.
Yeah.
He can save us some money because we're, when it comes to applying for grants or following, let's say David Ramber is successful, which I think will be, in getting that money appropriated, then there's work started. He doesn't follow through. He's the lobbyist that gets the job, gets the deal done. Then we need somebody who's gonna follow through with all the compliance aspects. Now, for example, whether it's, there's an appropriation that's been gotten to us by David Ramber, or whether it's an SRF loan that's with, with Tetra Tech's help, this guy wants Tetra Tech, in that example of Tetra Tech, what, Tetra Tech are charging us to put together this facilities plan, and I'm okay with that, approve the 30,000, whatever the number was. But then, once that's done, there is the ongoing compliance and monitoring and all the detail and paperwork. This guy said to me that this is where they come in and they can save us some money as opposed to having an engineering firm do that.
All right. Well, then the obvious thing to do is look across the aisle here with Danny and go, do you concur, yada, yada, yada?
The question, well, I can certainly ask you, Danny, what experience you have following through on, on this stuff, whether we can use a consultant of this sort. He can get us a lot of grants as well and he's prepared to come to our next board meeting.
Um-
For 15 minutes.
For the record, Danny Nelson.
Corbett Alday, he's prepared to come to a board meeting in two weeks' time to show, show up and answer questions.
Yeah, I know, but first, something that Rod said just a second ago made me think he was back on the first one.
No, only, the first guy is a lobbyist who's gonna get us the appropriation. He doesn't follow through after that.
But why, why would we wanna even talk to this guy before we-
Because, because he, it starts getting involved with our grant applications and our loan applications. And this is where we have an overlap with Tetra Tech. And then wondering whether we can save some money by hiring a guy like that down the road.
Let me first say, if you're talking about the Spring Lakes in Charlotte County, I was, Tyler and I were personally involved with that. So what involvement Dave had, I'm not really sure. But if he can get you money, great. We actually helped write the grant application. We were heavily involved with that project. Corbett Alday I've known for 10, 15 years. I would say, I, I, I think what he can do would be dependent on what you actually got from a grant and the type of grant that you got. Now, specifically what the $800,000, I will caution you, I think I've cautioned the board before, the $800,000 that Dave is referring to in, in Spring Lake. Now, on the back end side of that, the county was required to do a quality assurance plan and a water quality, basically, a plan for that. That, and we're actually doing that, and that's about $150,000 of that $800,000 that is required by the state to be performed. That's not something that Corbett Alday can do. Corbett, I think, and I've worked with him personally, I think he can help on compliance side, making sure you dot all your paperwork.
That's his big thing, yes.
Making sure, yeah, that's what he can do.
That's how he described himself.
He and I worked together in DeSoto County about 12, 13 years ago. And so there, he, he definitely has a, a function in society and, and, but it, I'm not saying that negatively.
This is sounding real positive.
I'm not saying that negatively. I'm just saying it depends on what the actual you're able to get as to what his role could be.
Backhanded compliments, is that what it was?
That's backhanded, all right.
There are things, I will say, that, that depending on the grant you get, you're gonna be required to have a spec- you're gonna be required to have a specialist do, that, that, I'm just saying, he may not be qualified to do, because he knows, he knows the paperwork, he knows the forms, he knows everything that has to be done. But some of the items you'll have, you're gonna have to have scientists do, you're gonna have to have engineers do, depending on what you actually get in the funding source.
So, I think what you're saying then, from a timing perspective, and Corbett agrees, I mean, we need your expertise to put together all the facilities plan and things leading up to the, the grant, okay? So, the, from a timing point of view, it might be premature to be considering a guy like this, because we, we shouldn't be considering compliance at this time.
I think it's good to have him on your, you know, it's, it's great to have him come talk to the board. Um, and it's great to have him in your rolodex, and once you find out what money you get and what the stipulations are from that, then you can make that decision, can he help you and can he save you, can he save you money?
Well, that decision would also be that the three of us would want some consultation by you, and expect that,
Sure.
to give us some guidance in that direction.
I have a lot of history, not just with Corbett, but in knowledge, and I can certainly guide you in that direction.
So, are we, for Rod's confidence, are the three of us going in the right direction with what we've just done over the last fifteen minutes?
Certainly, with David Rambe, I mean, he, he, he is, is somebody that is in the public eye and in the political eye, and if his information, you know, checks out, I don't know him personally, but apparently he, we've worked together, just that, you know, we're on different sides. We're on the technical side, he's on the, he's on the other end, actually making sure that what gets submitted is recognized and followed through. So, yeah, the people, you know, the, the Tetra Techs who help prepare that front-end side, we submit a form, and it goes into a black box, a guy like David Rambe will actually say, hey, you know, you need to, you need to pay close attention to this, these people are serious about doing this work, you really need to, and he can get an ear of a Matt Caldwell and Lisbeth Benequisto, and, and he can make sure that it gets the consideration it deserves.
That's his strength.
That's where his, his function is.
So, I had to pull that out of you, huh?
We're gonna ask for a proposal.
This is what we were talking about before.
But Danny, therefore, I talked, I spoke to Corbett this morning, he described himself as an engineer, he's not a P.A., he's got a degree in engineering, and you're saying that his strength is, is compliance and dotting the i's, crossing the t's. That's how he described himself. If we didn't hire him to do that, who would do it?
If, if, if it's something that staff couldn't do, then you would have to turn to somebody like us, and it's not our, it's not our strength.
We shouldn't be paying Tetra Tech to do that kind of stuff, right?
If, no, and, and, but again, I would have to see what that stuff is, and what I, I'm gonna take a step back and say, too, we're talking, this is grants, it's gonna have stipulations, you're, you're, we're talking about also separately, SRF.
Yes.
And SRF also has items you have to, to do with there. He may be able to assist with that.
He said he can, I've asked him.
If, if staff, if staff can't, and that's where he and I worked together, was on SRF-related, related, well, it was grant and SRF-related work with, with DeSoto County.
I would like to recommend that we invite Corbett Alday for twenty minutes for the next board meeting to show up, and we can ask him a few questions.
I, I don't have anything against this guy, I know what he's, what he's up to, because I've worked many, many projects in my day. But I think it's premature.
Okay.
I think absolutely we need to get a proposal from Rambe, and hopefully we can get a contract with them.
Okay.
But until we get indication of an appropriation that's, or a loan, that, that has some meat, meat on the bones.
Right.
I think it's premature to, to spend any time with him.
And I know we have a big meeting on October the fifteenth, and I, and I was concerned about having to get this guy in. And it doesn't have to be done in two weeks' time, I agree, but it's nice to know what resources are available to us, so it's-
Oh, that's, I said, we've, all the money we paid you.
That was worth it for that one page.
Yeah, well, there was a second page.
There was a second page, and I didn't include it.
I'm sure he has a brochure, a resume, he could certainly tell us-
Thank you.
SRF-type stuff.
Yeah, I just wanted, thank you, Danny. Scott, it's October the first, am I correct in saying now that our sheriff detail is canceled as of midnight last night?
Correct.
Thank you.
I'm about ready to adjourn this meeting, if we don't have a lot more.
Let's go.
Huh?
That's it.
We are adjourned.
Agreed.
Yeah. Yeah, I just want to, thank you very much.
Now, I'm to read this, and then give you a buzz or something, yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Tony, can I speak to this for a second?
Yes, sir.
Just wanted to take away-
Make sure he's all-
I know I take away some more, what's just been said.
Are you speaking to me?
Yes, sir.
I will date the others, but I need, this one was a need, if you could cross off August, put on your first date on- That's, that's the RW way one, that's when we, they've already signed one format. Thank you, I'll do, I'll insert the date on all yours.